So like, well.
That's why I have me to make reading, yes.
I'm third in the quarter right now.
Yeah.
Gigs.
Yeah, so that was.
Are you guys now, are you back full time at your office? Or are you still?
Mostly, but like, there's just kind of pixels. So if I would.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 4th Planning Commission meeting. I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
I'm sorry. Chairman, Vice Chairman Lord?
Here.
Mayor McGee, I'm sorry, Mayor Bigson, sorry.
Easy come, easy go, right?
Here.
Sage?
Here.
Clark Martin?
Here.
Gasson is expected. Howser?
Here.
King?
Here.
Dome?
Here.
Very good. We have a quorum. First order of business is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
To reply to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we have meeting minutes as in our packet here from September 7th. As everyone had a chance to review the minutes. And would anybody like to make a motion? So moved?
Second?
Very good. I will ask for the roll.
Sorry, who's supported?
King.
Mayor Bigson?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Lord?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Clark Martin?
Yes.
Howser?
Yes.
Dome?
Yes.
All right. Item number five, considerations. Consideration of a site plan to construct 167 new carports at the Forest Ridge Apartments located at 425 West Second Street. Vidia is with us tonight. What can you tell us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. At the city's request, we reviewed a proposal from Nathan Leader on behalf of Forest Ridge Apartments to construct 167 carports at an existing apartment complex. The site is bordered by First Street to the south, West Second Street to the north, and South Wilcox Street to the west, and Zoned RM1, which is multiple-family residential district. The multiple-family residential dwellings are a principal permitted use in this district, and accessory structures such as carports are also permitted by the ordinance. In addition to adding carports, the applicant is proposing redo of all their parking lots, installation of new curb lines, and concrete pads in the carport areas. I will pull up the site plan at this time. CEO and I, if you could kindly give me the sharing ability. The site plan sheet notes that the site will be improved in two phases. Okay, if you're giving just one second. Lot 1 and Lot 3 were shown as part of Phase 1, and the improvements to Lot 2 and Lot 4 were shown as Phase 2. If you see the Phase 1 line and the Phase 2 line, it was split into two phases. After the review letter was done, the applicant did send me a series of comments in response to the review letter. I did not have the opportunity to look at it till earlier this evening, and the applicant stated that the project is now to be done in three phases. If it is to be done in an additional phase, that needs to be shown on the site plan sheet, which is the sheet in front of you tonight. So far, it does show only Phase 1 and 2, so clarification is needed regarding how the phase lines are going to be separated into three phases. The site has four different parking lots. You have Lot 1 here, this is Lot 2, you have Lot 3 in this corner, and this is Lot 4. All of them are access of the abutting streets. The width of the access drives is not noted on these plans. Some of them appear to be excessively wide for two-way movement of vehicles, especially for Lot 1 and Lot 3. The applicant did state that these approaches were recently, not so long ago, done by the city at the time of redoing the streets, so those approaches are existing with. Now, for Lot 2, the approach drive is intended for two-way movement of vehicles, and it appears to be really narrow. Not sure exactly how the circulation here works. Similarly, it appears that these access drives might also be exit-only or entry-only. That needs to clarify if there's going to be any pavement signage, or if there is going to be any pole sign that says entry-only, exit-only, or do not enter. That clarification needs to be provided to ensure safe circulation. The subject site has sidewalks along all of its street frontages. All of that is existing. The plan also proposes sidewalk connections from the public sidewalks to the existing apartment buildings, so all of the connections from the parking lot to the existing buildings is being provided. The apartment complex has a total of 26 two-bedroom and 141-bedroom units. Based on the ordinance standards, a total of 319 parking spaces are required. The site plan on the right-hand side, if you total up these numbers, it notes the provision of a total of 312 parking spaces, which is a net shortfall of seven spaces. The applicant did mention that this is an existing legal non-conforming lot, and they cannot afford to lose any more spaces, and they would like to keep the non-conforming lot as is. The applicant, in their response to me, stated that the numbers that we have listed in our letter are not accurate. However, I can only go by the numbers that are shown on this sheet that is in front of you, because that is the official site plan sheet. If the applicant makes an error on this sheet enlisting the number of spaces, the site plan review letter will reflect whatever is shown on this sheet, so that correction needs to be made. Our ordinance does say that no more than 20 parking spaces can be in a single uninterrupted row. We have numerous spaces on this plan where you have significant number of spaces, almost 40 spaces, and over here, at least 26 spaces, all in single uninterrupted row with no landscape islands. For the applicant, compliance with the ordinance standards and putting in a landscape island will make the lot more non-conforming than it already is, and they are seeking Planning Commission approval to maintain the existing non-conformity of the parking lot. The site includes eight handicap accessible spaces total, and these spaces are spread out all over the site, except for Lot 2. The applicant has noted that because of the slope and the grade change over here, it is almost impossible to comply with ADA requirements to put in a handicap accessible space that will meet the slope requirement established under the ADA law. I would defer to the city building official in order to verify that it is indeed not possible to engineer a handicap accessible space in that area. In many places on the site, we have drive aisles that are excessively wide. The ordinance requires a drive aisle width of 24 feet for two-way movement of traffic. In many cases, it is 27 feet, it is 26 feet. Typically, we would say keep the parking lot as-is if the applicant is not disturbing it, but in this case, the applicant is going to be pulling out this parking lot in order to put a concrete base for the carports. So when you are redoing the entire parking lot, our recommendation would be to bring the aisles up to compliance that would marginally, if you add up the distances, it would marginally reduce the impervious surface on the site and add more room into the greenbelt areas. And that is a suggestion we made at this time. The site plan does show relocated dumpsters in three of the lots. Lot 1, the relocated dumpster is here. Lot 2 is over here, Lot 4 is over, there is a relocated dumpster shown here. I did not see any dumpster shown for Lot 3. The applicant said that it is shown on the site plan sheet. I could not find it till I went to Ariel Google Earth View, and then I found that this is the dumpster enclosure for the slot, which is not shown at this time. Our concern is mainly with the dumpster that is going to be relocated in Lot 1. I will go to photograph of the dumpster unit as shown. The applicant had previously mentioned that, I will zoom into the sheet, had mentioned that there is a great difference between Wilcox Street and the unit, and this whole screen will be shifted to shield the dumpster units. Our concern is the screen is really not effectively concealing the dumpster units because you are able to see the units on top. The whole point of the screen being six feet tall is to shield it. While the slope of the land does make that a challenge, our recommendation was to maybe add some arbor by tea or other tall evergreen shrubs, which will actually grow taller than the enclosure height on the slope, and screen these from view of a public right of view. Because as proposed, this enclosure is going to be shifted further closer to the street marginally, and these units will be just as clearly visible. So the screen is really not effective due to the way the land is. It can be mitigated by adding some evergreen trees on there. For the ordinance, I will go back to the site plan sheet. It's just, let me zoom. The ordinance requires the entire East property line to have a screening. This is an existing situation. There is a lot of wooded areas here that provides a natural screen. The applicant's site plan does say that there is fence, natural forest, metal, type barrier. We don't see the metal barrier or the fence shown or labeled on any of the plan sheets, although the applicant did say that it is labeled. I do not see anything labeled along the East property line, and it's not clear at this point of time how the existing screening is located and how effective it is. I do realize that the existing vegetation and wooded area over here provides for some of the screening as to some of the existing trees. With regard to lighting, the carports are to be provided with lighting underneath them. The applicant did submit cut sheet detail, and it is diffuse lighting, and even though it's not a concealed source, the carports are so low that it will conceal the light fixture. Since the entire parking lot is being redone, it was our recommendation that any existing light poles or other fixtures that are on the building also that are not shielded at this time be provided with steel. There is no photometric plan submitted, so it's impossible for us to determine whether the site actually meets the light spillage concerns. This has been a point of discussion at the Planning Commission, and Township Attorney has been working with the Planning Commission to come up with a new lighting ordinance. This apartment complex about single-family homes on all of its sites. So light spillage and bringing light under control would be a significant concern. This would be the only opportunity for the Planning Commission to review the site in its total. With regard to architecture, this apartment complex is over 50 years old. The addition of the carports and the redo of the parking lot brings much-needed improvements and facilities which will provide conveniences to the residents. The carports are to be constructed of steel support beams with a sloped metal roof. I will go back to some of the illustrations the applicant provided in their photograph to show you how it's going to look. This is an illustration, a rendering of how the carports are going to look. The applicant has also said that the roof has a snow load of 25 pounds per square feet, and the snow will be removed as required. The height clearance of the carports is only seven feet, so some of the larger SUVs might not fit underneath it. The applicant has indicated that they will be informing all of the residents about the limitations of parking under the carports. They have submitted renderings, as I mentioned. Due to the grade slope of the site and the low clearance of the carports, the carports do not themselves create a mass. That was a big concern at the last Planning Commission meeting. They do not create a substantial mass because they're pretty low from the ground, just seven feet. The flat and the color that they are proposed is something that would merge with the back of the parking lot. No new signage is proposed at this time. If they were to install anything, it needs to be approved administratively by the city prior to installation. At the last Planning Commission meeting, there was a lot of concerns about the carport, how it's going to appear, lighting, dumpster, and upgrades to an older apartment complex. The applicant did address a lot of those concerns, but a few of the concerns still remain to be addressed, and those require Planning Commission input, which is why the plan is before you tonight. So at this time, the Planning Commission has got to address deviations with required number of parking spaces, deviation against providing any landscape islands within the parking lot, and keeping any existing lighting as it is. Your choice is either to approve the plan with conditions to be addressed on revised and dated set of plans to be submitted for administrative review by the planner, or you can direct the applicant to address all of the remaining issues and anything else that we might discuss tonight, and ask them to submit revised plans and reappear before you at a future meeting. I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Vidia. Any questions from any commissioners?
I do.
Mr. Gasson?
The planner mentioned seven feet, and I'm not sure what that means. I don't have any drawings relative to what these carports look like. I have pictures. Is there any other documents that maybe I did not get?
I haven't, I didn't see anything in my packet either.
What is she referring to?
They. I believe the applicant submitted details of the steel and the pole thing with their first submission, and I did have that, but at this time, I believe that this packet, it is just the renderings. I'm scrolling back to see if there were any other details, but. Oh, Commissioner Gasson is correct. I see it's just renderings of the carport, the actual details of the construction of the structure were in the original site plan review packet. So what, I know that does not really address the Planning Commission's question, but they're basically saying that the clearance from grade till the ceiling of the carport is seven feet. Max.
So did you say max at the very end?
Yes, it is maximum seven feet clearance. That was my understanding.
So what's the low-end clearance?
I would defer to the applicant's architect if they can answer that question.
I'm sure there'll be other questions. That's, without that information, it's kind of hard to know. I mean, I have to ask questions. Another planning, question to the planner. She mentions parking information on the drawing, and I only was looking at C3 site plan, which I think she directed this to, and it looks like they're increasing the parking, which I think is good, but you mentioned that remain as is non-conforming. I get that it's still non-conforming, but there is an increase in parking. Is that correct?
Correct. They are, if I can go back to the site plan, I will show you. They are adding spaces in a few spots, but overall, they are, they are adding, if you can see in this lot, there is space being added over there. On this lot, they are adding one new parking space in Lot 2 at this corner, and they are adding five new parking spaces over here, four new bases here. So yes, they are definitely improving the existing non-conformity and making it less non-conforming than it was before.
Okay. I was just clarifying that I understood that it's more based on the drawings, but I thought I heard it was the same. That's not the point I was making. I counted 16 additional.
They're removing trees for those new spaces. Correct?
Is that to Vidia?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the question.
There is six trees that are proposed to remove in the area, and that's where the parking spaces are going to.
Yes, I believe, we had asked for information regarding tree removal previously, and I did not believe they were removing anything that was considered as a regulated tree, but let me just.
I think, Patricia, I think reading their response letter, they said one was being removed for a parking spot, and others had, they were either going to be too close or they had rot. Yeah.
So maybe I missed it. Are we adding back trees? You know, according to their own third-party Wenzel Tree Service, they're going to damage a lot of tree roots, preemptively remove a bunch of trees before the carports are in as they become hazardous to the ports and other vehicles in the future. Is there a landscape plan that I missed?
There's a landscape plan in there. Yep.
L1.
L1.
So we're adding six trees? Two, four, six, eight?
Looks like a, well. I didn't, yeah.
Go ahead.
Just L1, that's what I have. It doesn't show any removal, it just shows new.
Yeah, that's what I see too. I'm just looking, are we adding trees and becoming more green, or are we just adding more metal and a couple trees?
I pulled up the landscape plan on the sheet for you. The trees that you're taking over there are the new ones that are being added to the site. There is one at the entrance to Lot 2, and there are a bunch being added in and around building on Lot 4, and three evergreen trees at the corner of the street near their sign. So it's about one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. Let's say about 11 new trees being added.
Yeah, it looks, from their table, it was like 11 new trees, and on Sheet C2 shows the demolition, which includes call-out for tree removal.
Mr. Lord, what sheet was that, the removal?
Sheet C2.
C2, yeah.
Is the demolition plan. It shows the tree removal there. Any other questions, clarification for the planner?
I have one. So, thank you. Has the applicant reviewed with the city the tree ordinance in terms of, is this plan in compliance with that ordinance as well?
Did you get that, Vidia?
In terms of, in terms of the required street trees, Mr. Sage, is that the question?
No, in terms of actual removal and replacement.
Yes, I believe the applicant initially stated that only one tree is being removed, and we do not have specific landscaping standards unfortunately for multiple-family residential sites itself, so the applicant is replacing the one healthy tree that they're taking out. The other trees, I believe, were deemed to be diseased or dead already. If Nick is present, I'm not sure I see Nick, but.
Nick is not in today, but he did speak with the applicant. As far as if that is correct, probably, but they can follow up with Nick during the construction and demolition of the.
Any other questions for the planner? Vidia, I just had one. I realize that we're dealing with an existing, you know, a built situation here, so it's maybe treated slightly differently than a new application, a new, you know, green development. And lighting has been an issue that's come up a lot throughout the city of late. How have we traditionally handled existing lighting measurements, photometrics for a situation like this? I realize they could go out and measure what exists today. I don't know if there's anything that's over and above ordinance that's occurring out there, but what have we typically required?
Lighting is typically one of the performance standards in the ordinance, and it is enforced by code enforcement. Basically, that's how you would handle lighting if there is excessive light spillage. The city would receive a complaint, they would go out and investigate the illumination intensity, and then make the applicant make changes to comply with the ordinance standards. However, in cases where older sites come before you for site plan approval, it is the Planning Commission's opportunity to try and bring things up to code to the extent feasible. I mean, this apartment complex is over 50 years old, so everything cannot be changed to bring it into compliance. Our goal is that if the lights are not shielded, maybe this is an opportunity for the applicant to add shields or replace some of the fixtures, at least, that are pointing directly towards single-family residential neighborhoods.
Do we know if there's been any code violations of any sort out here relative to lighting?
Not, not to my knowledge, but I'm generally not privy to code enforcement complaints, so I would not know the answer to that. I generally don't hear fire chief or, maybe Attorney Kraft has heard something, but I wouldn't know if the city has received any complaints on this particular site.
Okay, fair enough.
So, Mr. Vice Chair, I, for my input, I don't have any recollection of complaints from this, from this development on lights.
Yeah, great, thank you. Mr. Sage?
Thank you, sir. And to your point, I think our next meeting, we're going to actually establish a public hearing on an ordinance we've discussed previously twice, that I know of, regarding light and illumination. So I think that would be very poignant here, that we at least advise the applicant to be aware, so they may want to comply with.
It's, yeah, it's a difficult, I mean, with new developments, it's.
Understood.
You know, you do a photometric plan based on what you're going to.
Right.
Build, you know, it's a little different when you're talking about the build requirements, you know, so I can, I can understand that, but it's definitely worthwhile conversation.
I have a question.
Lighting has, please, go ahead.
Oh, well, these, these vapor lights, there was a going, these are going to be put underneath or inside the, or the ceiling of these carports?
Yes.
So it's going to be like an indirect lighting, so it's really not going to be super bright and obtrusive? Do, I mean, we don't know.
I don't have any concerns regarding the lights that they are proposing at this time under the carports. It's not even going to be visible. It's going to provide ambient safety lighting. I am referencing the other lights that are existing in the parking lot, not the lights for the carport. The other lights that might be on the buildings and within the parking lot shining onto the parking lot. Those are the issue over here, not the new lights that the applicant is proposing for the carports.
If I read the applicant's response letter correctly, they said they do not currently have lighting proposed, but they're going to take steps around the conduit supply, and then they may consider adding lights in at some point.
Right.
So, so this picture is what might get added, but it's not, if that's correct.
Lighting has always been a concern in the city. In fact, it was the first zoning issue that I had encountered in the city of Rochester well over a decade ago when I started working there. Lighting has always been a point of concern, especially since some of the lots in the western side of the city and in the vicinity, the single-family lots, they are small, so it doesn't take much for light to spill over from one property to the other. So it's, lighting is an important factor towards the quality of life of people. It does affect how people live and how they perceive their quality of life. So lighting has always been a concern in the city over the years again and again, and as Commissioner Sage mentioned, it's back before you once again. You know, Attorney Kraft can also fill in it. He's visited this ordinance many, many times over the years that have been concerns, not with regard to this property, but just overall lighting in the city is a, is an issue of concern.
If there's nothing else, I'll ask for the applicant. Mr. Gasson, did you have something? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were raising your hand, Mr. Gasson.
I would.
Oh, go ahead.
I thought you were referring to the gentleman. I guess it's a couple of comments, and maybe in the form of questions as well, that before the applicant kind of presents, he might be able to take these and kind of include it in his commentary, and I have a number of things. Last time we met, we kind of talked about have the neighbors been addressed and got some input. I'd like to hear about that when he addresses it. If this kind of comes back through with a future submittal, assuming so, I'd like to get the drawings that illustrate how they're going to be, what they are, first of all, and then how they're going to be positioned and elevation relative to the slope of the land. Are there going to be offsets between a long run of them, or is it going to be one smooth line of canopies, or is it going to be a step to installation? That's a question, but if it's going to be that, I'd like to see it. The planner mentioned snow being removed in her commentary about the carport. I'd like him to expand on what that means and what happens if it doesn't. I'd like him to expand on what that means, and, um, what happens if it doesn't get removed in a, in a way? Or is there a detriment to the installation? Is there a hazard if it doesn't get removed? Otherwise, I'm not sure why it was mentioned. Um, I'd like to know of the numbers, seems like it's mostly one bedrooms. Is there a number of them that are accessible units, or is that really not something that is included in a development like this? I know it's undergone a lot of changes and upgrades, so maybe that's been done. Planner mentioned landscape islands. I certainly think, uh, the magnitude of the development or redevelopment, we should have, um, landscape islands in the parking lot as part of the plan. Even though it might, um, reduce the overall parking, I think it would be a balance between what they're doing with the carports and the overall site and the way it's perceived from the passerby or the neighbors more importantly. Therefore, I believe areas that are indicated for barrier-free parking. One, however, doesn't indicate any kind of ramping like the other three, and it's in Lot 1, right about in the middle of the development on the top of the page. There's two spots that don't show the ramp, and they're all noted and indicated on the other, and so I'm wondering if that's an existing compliant area, or should that be noted? I would say if it's, even if it's existing, it should be noted as so. Uh, the other question I had, planner went through the requirements of parking or drive aisles, variation that's on the plan. I think the change should be made to be compliant, and the only one I saw it wasn't, to get the idea that where they're wider, maybe that becomes a hazard in some way, but where certainly 22 and not our minimum, 24, it should be changed, and that's in Lot Number 2. Um, but related and really what drew my attention to this is where parking abuts a walk aisle with an 18-foot parking spot, the bumpers overhang those walkways, and they're not noted, the width of those walkways, and it should be seven feet, uh, to be an accessible passing sidewalk width, and I'd like that to be noted on the plan. Confirm that it is, and if it isn't, certainly where the barrier-free spots are, and any route from there to the building should be made seven feet wide. I don't think it has to be everywhere, but for that, that might be a planner's, uh, technical review issue, not general as I'm stating it. Um, and then parking for the handicap, the signs are indicate, thank you, sorry about that. They're indicated on the plan, Sheet C3 is a general or standard typical detail, and the sign is located right at the edge of the parking. It's kind of on the bottom, right in the middle of that page, and I think that's just more or less a generic thing, but when you're putting them in practice like that, it's a, it's a nuisance, especially with an 18-foot deep parking spot. People don't want to pull up to the sign, so they park well short of the sign, they're out in the aisle. I am proposing that the, um, the applicant show them on the sidewalk opposite the parking stall, not right at the parking stall. That way, if the driver doesn't hesitate to pull all the way into the space. Um, lastly, I guess, or two things, the ramp, as I noted earlier, there's not really a detail in the package, so it needs to be clear what that three-square thing is on the drawing, because it could be a lot of different things. Some are good and some aren't, so I'd like to know in detail what that is. Um, and then, I think lastly, here, I'm looking at this as a whole thing. Uh, we have four parking lots and, um, nine, I think it's nine parking carports, and that can be looked at a couple of different ways. At a minimum, from a, a site or a composite site, that would be seven parking facilities. Four parking lots and carports within those parking lots. Or 13, which is dramatically different and maybe excessive. The reason I point that out is every facility in a parking, every, every facility within a parking arrangement has to have accessible parking. So every parking carport should have a accessible parking spot, uh, to the minimum standard. So that might be excessive, but I'd say at minimum, seven of these facilities need to be accessibly parked. Maybe not all 13. I think that's a technicality the planner could look at. Uh, the U.S. Accessible Board ADA Parking Standards and determine that, but my understanding of the definition is every separate facility has to have its own accessible parking spots to the minimum required, and it all goes by numbers. So in that case, um, and then even putting that aside, I think the point of having covered parking for convenience and safety for the residents, they should include barrier-free parking. That just, to me, is a practical thing to do, but I think further to that is, is required, and I think that plan needs to be adjusted to show that. Maybe the planner has some experience with that already, if she can enlighten us.
Um, thank you Chairman Gassen. Uh, thank you, Mr. Gassen. Uh, I would definitely need to speak to the city's building official. Uh, the applicant has cited the green site as a lot of reason for placing the handicap accessible spaces the way they are, but I completely understand your comments in that every facility needs to provide the same amount of facilities for those that are parking in the barrier-free accessible spaces, and the sidewalks need to have ample clearance. I don't know if in this situation, they have enough room to widen the sidewalks, for instance, in Lot 1, if these are 18-foot spaces. I believe they do about only five-foot wide sidewalks, but the aisle is 27 feet wide, so there is more than enough room to actually provide for a 20-foot deep space and make sure that the sidewalks are clear for handicap accessibility. Um, I will definitely have to speak to the building official on this account to make sure, uh, what would fall under the building per purview and what we can require under the planning purview. I'll also refresh myself on, uh, the ADA regulations before I make a comment on that.
If I could just add one more, Mr. Chairman. Um, all that might have sounded negative, but it was intended to be positive. I think there could be a great improvement if those things are taken into account for the residents that need those kind of things. Um, my, my final comment, um, is a feeling, so to speak, and I stated it last time we were looking at this, and that is, I think, the impact of this, although it's a, a use by right, um, in some senses, because you can have these accessory buildings on a multifamily development. Um, however, I think it's kind of the cart before the horse or the horse behind the cart, whatever you want to call it. Had this plan come to us 50 years ago today, we'd be looking at this question differently. Um, we would be saying, well, if you want to cover these parking spots, you need to position them on the site in a way that are not so much the prominent thing. Um, and I think there's been some measures, and I'm just, again, giving my feelings, I think there's been some measures taken on the applicant's part to say, let's use the nicer carports, let's make it a little more slim, let's make it a little more palatable. But nonetheless, in my view, um, it's almost as though you can't say yes for the use, but you, we have to be able to say how that use is acceptable, in my opinion. And I'm not really comfortable with the idea that there hasn't been many changes in terms of the amount and where these things are from last time we saw it. I truly expected we'd see something more, or at least different, whether it be, I don't know how you make it more sensitive to the surroundings, especially to the, the neighbors to the north. It's just the response that I see here just didn't really, in my opinion, take that into account, and I'm, I'm really kind of stumbling over that as a, um, seeing this as something that moves forward, uh, in my opinion. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Gassen. Uh, with that, is the applicant here with us tonight?
Yes.
Great, would you, um, are we, yeah? Yes, yes, that's it. If you would just introduce yourself, uh, name and address, that'd be great.
Nathan Leader, 31800 Northwestern Highway, Farmington Hills, Michigan, 4334.
And Kate Simmala, 425 West Second Street, Rochester.
I represent the ownership and management of this property since we took it over in 2014. Kate has been my property manager in right and left hands, uh, helping me to run this property and make the improvements we've made to it, and Kate's gonna do most of the talking about a lot of the comments that you guys all have and your questions, because she's been living, breathing, and eating this project for the last two or three years, as far as the carports are concerned. Um, so, I mean, I, I have a lot of responses to people, what people have brought up, but I think she has it more poignantly organized in her mind as far as where she wants to start, so I'm gonna turn it over to Kate, and I'll stand here with her and jump in when I feel I need to.
You guys gave a lot of notes, um, but I want to reply to each of you, because I think it's important. Um, Mr. Gassen, you mentioned right at the beginning, the clearance. We have the cut sheets from the previous, so if you'd like to have them, we'd more than happy to give them to you. I think it's a minimum seven feet, just so you're clear on that, um, and yes, we're adding more spaces.
I don't think, I'll, I would rather get them through the submittal process, thanks.
Sure. Um, I know there's a little bit of comments about trees, so I'll just try to summarize that. Um, we did have one tree getting removed for one space, but yes, the rest we're getting rid of, because there was issues with them, and we're adding quite a few. Um, and I think in the cover letter, I had mentioned too about all the trees we've added just recently, the last few years, and a lot of conversations with Nick about trees. We're very aware of the tree rules. Um, he came and drove the site with us. We went over the sizes of the trees that we thought would be an issue, and then, of course, had a tree service come and, and talk to us about the condition of some of them. We actually, um, when we came to redo the site plan, the second go-around, we realized that we'd have to address some more trees than what we initially expected. Um, so if there's more questions about trees, happy, happy to answer that. Yeah, the 40 pear trees we mentioned in the letter, hopefully you saw that. We've done a ton of landscaping, we've added quite a number of trees on the property already, but willing to do more, for sure. Um, and then the lighting conversation, um, I, this kind of taps into, I, I had a great opportunity to talk to all my neighbors, so thanks for whoever said they wanted some feedback on that. Um, we've talked to a lot of the homeowners. I think somebody mentioned on the north side, Second Street, probably got the most positive feedback from that side of the street in terms of how we're caring for the property, how the dumpster surrounds currently looked, loving the carports, the renderings, how they're sleek, more modern, not as obtrusive as they thought. So, um, I'm happy to share the details of their feedback more. Um, we did have one person that was worried about lighting in the carport spaces themselves. Um, so that's why we've left that topic open, because we're not wanting to add so much light on that site that it gets crazy with light pollution. If you're familiar, the, um, the lights that are downtown, they stop at Walnut and Second Street, so up by us, it's very dark, um, and I think residents and homeowners like that. Our floodlights are on our buildings, but then there's a parking lot and then the street, so the floodlights aren't as obtrusive at our property as they might be as if they were right on the edge.
They're farther away from residential homes, on our buildings, they're farther away, and we have had no complaints, none of the residents have complained to us about our lights shining on them, and we haven't heard anything from the city as far as complaints about our lights either. We proposed to put in wiring for our carports to put lights in, in case we need to do it, but we wanted to first see what it would look like once we put the carports up, how dark it was underneath them, how dark it was around them, before we start just flooding the place with light pollution. So we wanted to take it step by step. That's why we didn't necessarily have a specific plan for lighting at this point, other than just wiring in the underground underneath the asphalt when we put it in.
Um, and then I think the last comments, we're with you, Mr. Gassen, I'll try to just hit a couple as, as much as we can, and happy to go into more detail if you want. Um, as far as the carports, they're not stepped, they're all a smooth, straight line. Um, there's no, you know, step down or elevation issues, we didn't have to worry about that. Um, the snow load was a question that Vidya brought up, so that kind of threw us too. We weren't sure how to answer that one, other than the cut sheets just say that they have the 25-pound, I, I guess if we ever got dumped on...
Our plan was to have our maintenance gentleman take snow shovels, snow rakes, go up on them, and just pull the snow back off of the carports. All of it's coming into a green space with the exception of one carport in the one parking lot that's a double car, carport, and we would brush that off the carport, shovel it down into an area where snow's being stored, and we'd probably have gutters on there, too.
I think you also asked about accessible units. We don't have accessible units. Um, all of our buildings, they were not built as being accessible, there's none inside.
The only thing that's handicapped accessible on our property is our office.
Yep, and I think we mentioned in the letter that our, um, engineer brought up to us that the slope of all of our lots was technically too high, they have handicap spaces properly put in. Um, the one that's the highest is Lot 2, and that's where they said, hey, maybe we should move it and have it by the office.
So I will say I'm a little concerned that the city wants me to make sure I have eight handicap spaces or seven handicap spaces. If, God forbid, something happens and someone sues me, uh, because they slipped and fell because the slope wasn't right, I'm not too happy about being in that position. Uh, we're still willing to put handicap spaces in, it's just the lots, we can't change the slope of the lots. We can't change this site. It is, it is what it is as far as the size of the site. We can't really expand, you don't want us to put more hard surface in and have less grass area. We're trying to keep that to a minimum, and, um, the plan was to try to have one parking, one carport space for every apartment. Now, I want to also point out that I think Vidya's, um, numbers are not right, okay? On the, on the number of units and the number of spaces, I think it's wrong.
Yeah, it's not a huge error. Um, you had mentioned on the cover letter, Vidya, that we needed one and a half spaces for one bedrooms and our 141 bedrooms and two, for the two bedrooms, that would equate to needing 262 spaces, and as of today, we have 296. So we do have enough spaces, and then with us adding some, we'd be at 312. So that was the only little hiccup on the response that I noticed, unless I'm missing something there, but, um, can I ask you really quick about Lot 1, Mr. Gassen? You said that there was a ramp missing on the plan. Is that for the handicap space that's near the office?
Yeah, there are two handicap spaces indicated.
Yep.
And the sidewalk immediately to the south is kind of ghosted in, it's not drawn with definition.
Yeah, that is an existing handicap space, it's for our office. Um, so they must have just missed putting the ramp on there, it sounds like?
There's a ramp there.
Is what you're saying?
It was a question to me, because the others have it and this one doesn't, so it just, I'm looking at it thinking, I don't know what it is.
Yep.
So it needs to be indicated that it's an existing compliant.
I just want to make sure I had the right one. Um, I heard your complaint about the drive aisles and maybe trying to shorten those. That makes me cringe as property manager, because moving trucks, um, come in and out of our lots constantly.
Dumpster, garbage dumpster trucks.
Yeah, and, um, we want the maneuverability, it's there, it's, you know, we're not bumping out the lots too much. We are trying to not encroach too much on our green space, so I, I hear your concern, but that one, of course...
I would think that the city would welcome the fact that we're wanting to spend the money to make the aisles wider. We're not going 10 feet wider, we're going a few feet wider, because we've got these big moving trucks that come in and out. And the last thing I want to do is spend $3,000 of space on carports and have these trucks damage them. So I, I, we, we went, we went to the extreme to make these aisles a little bit wider, thinking it's safer for these trucks to not damage and have an accident.
I think the last two just responses, um, I, the handicap space requirement in the carports, that one, I have to definitely get some more feedback on that one. I don't know if I can wrap my brain around that. Um, and then your, um, just comment about how it will look and maybe being a little bit more sensitive, and I think you specifically mentioned the neighbors on the north. Um, we heard you in the last meeting, definitely about this topic, and so one of our big goals was not just to get the renderings, so you saw how sleek and more modern that these are. All of our competitors in the city of Rochester have the very, I say old, but double mansard carports. They're wooden, they're painted black, and they're not attractive, and I get it, but these are so much different, and I think it'll look so much more appealing. Of course, they know about Cedarbrook, I think we mentioned that in the last meeting, you guys are aware of how those look. Um, but to me, the best feedback was from the neighbors directly themselves. Um, I walked up to one homeowner, she's lived there since 1982, and I had renderings on an iPad, and they said, um, I'd like to show you, we're thinking about putting carports in, and her face went like, "Carports, gross." And as soon as she saw the rendering, she's like, "Oh, I can handle those, those look nice, and the hill will cover them a little bit from the view of my home," and I got almost all the homeowners having the same feedback with that.
Almost everyone on Second Street, no one really gave us any problems about it, who should talk to. We talked to a couple of people on First Street, and again, they, they didn't really have any problems with it either, and what I wanted to do was I wanted to bring some residents here tonight, but I couldn't get any to come with me, who actually live there, who want carports. And I think maybe the next time we meet, if we do, I would be happy to... And I think maybe the next time we meet, if we do, I would be happy to, we'll be happy to canvass our residence and get a count on how many want carports. Because I think that will tell you that people living there paying the rent that they're paying and having the nice cars that they have would like them covered.
It's a lot to digest.
Yeah, there's a lot. We understand. It's a big project, but we're just trying to give the people who live there what we think they want, what we know they want, and be competitive with our competition.
Yeah, we can understand that. It's an investment that you're making.
It's an investment I won't get back for a long time.
All right, no, I.
But it's really where the property needs to go next. I can't do much more to it that I haven't already done. I can't add a clubhouse and a tennis court or, you know, things like that. I have no room for that, but I have room on my existing site to add carports.
Yeah.
And nice ones.
Yeah, so our job is just to balance what the ordinance says, what the ordinance requires, and some of the discretion. I guess, just a quick question for me. So, if I'm understanding what you're saying, that you believe that you're overparked compared to what the ordinance requires?
Just a little bit, barely. I mean, it's a pretty, from what I can tell how they designed the community, none of our parking lots are connected. And so, like, if you look at Lot 1 as an example, that's primarily built to feed that U-shaped section of buildings, which is 55 units. And each parking lot is kind of arranged in that way. It's one of the reasons we just recently decided to do this in a three-phase plan because we started realizing the more we looked at all the parking spaces, we were going to have problems with parking if we shut down too many lots at once.
We have to do one lot at a time.
So, we're going to be really cautious and careful of that.
And three phases within two years, though. I mean, I'm hoping three of the lots in one year and then the last lot in a second year.
Terrenement law?
Yes, Vidya.
Thank you. Thank you, Kate and Nathan. I just wanted to provide a correction. Yes, that is a typographical error in my letter. With 26 two-bedroom units and 141 bedroom units, the total parking requirement would be 262 spaces. They are providing 312 spaces, which means they have a surplus of 50 spaces. The reason why the lot is considered non-conforming is that the spaces are not distributed, as Kate said, based upon the number of units in each lot. And each one of the lots is completely compartmentalized from other. Lot 1 is not connected to Lot 2, 3, and 4. So, each lot by itself does not provide the required number of spaces, but if you look at the sum total of the site, they actually have a surplus of spaces, which actually brings me back to the comment that if there is a surplus of spaces, then there is no reason not to attempt to put in landscape islands only in those areas where you actually have a surplus. Maybe Lot 4 has got a surplus and you could maybe put in a landscape island to bring it closer into compliance. But thank you for that. That is a typographical error, an extra number got added in there. So, I just wanted to provide that correction.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask you a question of Mr. Gasson. You were saying something about handicap spaces and the signs at the end of the spaces. All these carports are not up against the buildings. So, open parking is up against the buildings where you can get out of your car and walk right into a sidewalk and on into a hallway. So, those handicap signs would go in the grass area, well away on the other side of the sidewalk, indicating that it's a handicap spot. I'm not sure I understood, am I addressing you correctly?
As you described it, it's exactly the way I think it should be, but your plan doesn't show it that way.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Our plan doesn't show?
It says that the sign is right at the parking space, causing someone to possibly not pull all the way in.
Yeah, it's going to go in the grass across from the sidewalk.
That's how we have our two existing.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
Yep.
They'll appreciate that.
Yeah. Signed it on the carports, is that an issue?
I didn't hear that.
Okay.
Do you have any questions for us while we're here?
Yeah. Let's open it up. Anyone have any thoughts, comments, questions? Christian? It was a deep sigh.
Yeah. You know, I struggle with this one because I certainly recognize the competitive nature of multifamily ownership, okay? And I certainly appreciate the fact that this is your property, this is an investment, and you want to do whatever you can to enhance it, to make it more attractive to people to live at your buildings. The struggle I'm having on the opposite side of that is when I go by there, I see particularly Lot 3, I'll focus on 3 because I see that one the most, is I see just a, like a sea of blacktop. And now, the idea is to add metal to it, another hard surface. And I was hoping, I think, maybe, and I don't want to put words in Mr. Gasson's mouth, something to soften it up a little bit versus making it more hard in a sense of a material. And the idea that there are no landscape islands, there is only a few evergreen trees, I think, that had been proposed to put over there. I just think that if there was a way to do more softening of the appearance of these and more of a natural look, the fence, just from a personal taste point, it's not something that I think is an enhancement. It's just kind of like an afterthought, hey, I'll put this wooden fence up, and I don't know if it adds any value, obviously none security-wise, maybe a little bit slightly from an aesthetic, but that fence, I just don't see it happening. But I personally would like to see more of a softening in the hardscape if you're going to add so much of a harder material vis a vis the metal. And that's, those are my initial thoughts, and I'll be quite candid with you. It's a tough call for me, but that's where I'm at right now.
I understand.
Of course.
I'm glad you brought that up because I forgot about our renderings. When we were putting the renderings together, we started off with arborvitae, just a mass wall of them. And the second we saw it, we're like, this is so not right. This is, it feels.
It's like a jail.
Yeah, it just felt wrong. And then, we even showed some of the homeowners that perspective, too, and gotten a good feedback from them. So, we were like, all right, like, this needs to, we've got to go back and redo this.
We thought that the fire marshal was also going to be an issue of security and being able to see through and not being able to hide behind bushes, you know, a safety issue as far as if we just put up a wall of trees to hide everything.
But then, that goes to the lighting issue, you know, in a sense that if you're going to have these 28 bays of covered parking, I mean, if you're standing in the middle there, let's say you're number 14 or something, I have to believe on a night like tonight, you know, as it gets, it's going to be quite dark. And there is, I would have to think, going to be a need for lighting under there. And I think that's going to be a concern. And I think, again, some of the other commissioners may have talked about that. Personally, I would want to see, what are you proposing in there? And you might not have an idea just at this particular moment, but maybe when you come back, I would want to see something, hey, this is what the lighting is going to be, this is how it would look from the outside in there. Because if I was parking my car, I would want to have some type of light under there to make sure someone wasn't hiding behind the door.
I think the uncomfortable safety measure feature came in, and you could have great light under there, but someone's still definitely looking or behind a big wall of arborvitae. So, we did do a round two. We talked to actually Nick a little bit about what we could handle with our heavy deer population out there. And we had a couple of renderings with some spruce trees. One of the issues on Second Street is we have a ton of mature trees, and that's the picture that's up there right now. And if we shove spruce trees in there, they have nowhere to grow. We were really struggling with that. And so, we kind of did fall back on the simplicity of the railing. It does, we have a railing like that up near the office. So, we kind of were liking tying that main entry to our property together with something like that. And I think in the letter that we sent to, we mentioned being open to adding some bushes and things around that fence to kind of add to the landscaping, to help cover the carports if necessary. And really quick.
The thought maybe was to do 10 or 15 or 25 feet of split rail fence and then have some plantings next, and then another 20 feet of split rail fence to sort of break it up. We thought about doing something like that, too. And we can come back with something like that as well.
And that would also be Phase 3, so that's going to be a year and a half down the road. We've got some time to think about that.
And finally, and then I'll certainly let the other members talk, is I think for me personally, it would be helpful to have some letter, I mean, you don't have to pull people in here to the meeting, but certainly some type of like a letter of support or something like that. I would be curious to see, you know, how many neighbors are proponents of it and get an idea of that because it's hard to make a decision when you say, oh, yeah, we spoke to a few. I mean, listen, it's not that I don't trust your candor, but the idea of I would want to see something substantive or tangible to.
Can you tell me about letters from the residents?
Yeah, just some support letters.
From the people across the street or from our actual residents?
No, not necessarily from the residents, but the adjacent property owners who would be affected by this.
And then, you mentioned lighting. I mean, our plan right now is to run conduit, be prepared to add the lighting that we gave the cut sheets for, which is pretty much exactly what Cedarbrook has. So, if you're familiar with that site, that's a good example to look at. But we have a ton of communities where our floodlights do the job. I am worried in some of our lots, we'll have to do lighting, I'm sure, because we have some carports that are further out. But in some, there's great lighting on the lots right now, and we're hopeful that that will be working. And we don't add too much.
There's really only two lots that the lights affect homeless. That's right on Second Street and Wilcox and First. The big one behind First, behind the building on First Street, it doesn't show, it's on, you've got a building blocking everything. So, it's, there's no light issue there, I don't believe.
Are you talking Lot 3 or 4?
Lot 4.
Lot 4, right.
The one on First Street where we have a big building.
Yeah, that's Lot 4.
The carports are behind the building, where the bridge is. There's really no issue there with any homeowner.
And I look more, when I see the prominent corner, I see it would be Lot number 3, which would be Wilcox and First Street, you know, is across from the cemetery there. And that's the sea of, the blacktop, you know, that very hard scape. And I say, you know, is there something that could be done to soften it up? And that would be my, you know, challenge to.
I tried to talk to the people across the street on Wilcox, but I had no luck.
Right. They don't want to talk to you.
You know, this house is on First Street, though. I talked to them more recently, and they're interesting. Their houses are elevated, and so when I was up on their porch, their view is like all up in our treetops. So, they might see the tops of the carports a little bit, but their view is way different than what you experience on the road, especially over there.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, I'm just going to make a point, follow up with what Commissioner Hauser stated. That corner is, I just drove by there tonight on the way here again, just to see it again before we spoke. I do think, though, that the whole line of pear trees and, you know, there's going to be quite a bit of softening there. And you are going to have problems, you know, putting a lot of landscape in there because of just the mature trees and just the competition of the water, along with just shade. You know, I mean, keeping the lawn looking nice is going to be, you know, a challenge. But I think that you have done a nice job considering, you know, the environment. So, I do want to thank you for all of your efforts because I feel that, you know, you have listened, and I do think that, you know, some testimonials and maybe a little bit more softening of the, kind of the, where you could maybe put some islands in or some plantings where you can just cut that urban heat, you know, the heat island from the, all the asphalt will just be a nice break. And you could do that with simple grasses, you know, some ornamental grasses and things that are not, have high, they don't have high water requirements and could be something very simple and cost-effective. So, thank you for your efforts.
Thanks.
Mr. Sage?
Thank you, Chairman Lord. Thank you again, too, for your input. I would concur with my fellow commissioners regarding additional softening opportunities around the complex. But there was one question that came up. So, the notes tell us there's two phases. Vidya talked about a third phase that you all had added. So, am I just interpreting that the first two phases would be the construction, the third phase would be landscaping?
I think we would do everything in one lot from start to finish. What we're saying is we have to do one lot at a time because we can't displace two lots of cars with nowhere else to park.
Okay.
We can only possibly, you know, displace one lot amongst all the other lots, do the paving, do the carport, do the landscaping, do it all, and then go to the next one, hopefully the same year, just a couple of months down the road, and maybe even a third one in the same year. I don't think we can do all four in one year, right?
Yeah.
And then, the fourth one, the second year.
Thank you.
But we would do it from start to finish.
Okay.
Yeah, we wouldn't be waiting years to put landscaping in.
Thank you.
I want it done.
Anyone else? I guess for me, I would agree. I see that this is an investment, it's an improvement to the center, which I think is a great thing. I think you've got an opportunity here to do some things to even make it a little more aesthetic, which I know you've undertaken, and maybe you've heard some comment that maybe just a little bit further would be good. My two cents now, in light of the fact that we're potentially have more than enough parking relative to the ordinance in certain lots, and I don't know exactly which ones, I'm guessing maybe Lot 3 is, whatever, whichever ones are overparked, I would consider softening those a little bit with putting in some landscape islands and those sorts of things. It'd be less asphalt for you. I don't know, you know, what the demand is of your residents for parking, and if these parking lots are maxed out as they are, I don't know, but you'll have to make that decision on how important that is to you. But I think from this body, some softening, that might be an opportunity to do that.
We'll definitely look at that. Again, we want to try and maximize the carports because we want at least one for every unit, and that way, we can dictate where they have to park, which helps us with control of where people park in relation to where their apartment is or their hallway is. So, we have to, and we have, but we'd really like at least one for every unit. So, it's going to be, I mean, we'll figure something out. We'll come back with something regarding these landscaped islands, whether they're in the parking lot or something nearby or something, I don't know.
I'm just, I was just doing the math on our lot. So, Lot 1 and 2, there's no surplus or maxed. Lot 3, which is the Wilcox lot everybody keeps bringing up, we're adding one space to that lot. That lot is pretty much maxed. So, adding islands to those three lots would be crazy. So, Lot 1 is the, oh, I'm sorry, Lot 4 is the lot we could potentially add because we're adding 16 spaces down there, and it's not very visible. It's our most hidden lot.
Why would you want to waste a lot as opposed to Wilcox? We would do something in the green space outside of the carport between the street and the carport.
Right.
To soften the look of the carports from the street.
Correct.
I don't think we can do it in the parking lot between spaces. It's just going to eat up spaces.
Well, what I heard, though, was that 262 spaces are required overall if you just add up all of the units, and 312 are being provided. So, that's an excess of 50. Now, that's not on a per lot basis, so you'll have to look at that. You'll have to look at it on a per lot basis where there may be excess, and then what you can do with that access. So, I think that's something to consider. You know, I tend to agree that the split rail fence doesn't necessarily do it for me either. I mean, I appreciate the effort to it. It's not anything that, for me, is drawing a great aesthetic appeal as you drive by. But I think that you could do something with it, and you suggested maybe breaking it up a little bit, having some landscaping in between. Because sometimes, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to screen, in my opinion. Sometimes, your eye can be drawn even to the ground with shrubs and things like that that just take you away from the carport itself. So, I'm not a landscape architect, so I don't know the answers, but, you know, just something to consider. Anyone else?
I don't want to be presumptuous, but when you come back, if you come back, would you be able to identify, so you've got four lots, and each lot services the respective buildings that are adjacent to it? Is it possible to identify how many people, how many residents live in those particular buildings?
Yeah, I've been watching this for the last couple of years, just to kind of get a feel, because we have turnover, so it changes, right? Usually, like, an industry standard is that you can have up to four people in a two-bedroom and two in a one-bedroom typically. And so if we use those numbers to produce a maximum occupancy number, we usually ride somewhere in 60% of that. So, and you really have to look at it lot by lot, because each lot, you know...
It's independent.
Yeah, it's very independent. But you can look at, like, two of the lots have 79 parking spaces currently, and so 60% of those are occupied. And that number has proven to be very accurate in the last few years, even just going out and counting, you know, when they're very full in the morning, just to see how accurate it is, and it's been pretty dead on.
So if I understand correctly what you're saying, so let's say Lot Number Three, do you know, it, it's not a pop quiz, how many spots are in Lot Number Three?
Uh, one of your site plans has on it, but I think that's the one that has 79.
Seventy-four. Oh, I'm sorry, 79 will be...
Nine, twenty-six, twenty-eight, sixteen.
I'm just a lawyer, so...
It services four hallways, four bedrooms.
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine?
Yeah.
And what's 60%?
Services 60 units.
Seventy-nine, 47.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven, okay. So if we take 79, 60% of that would be 47 spots, that you could commit to that, and then it would be, the delta would be visitors and surplus, right?
Correct.
Okay. So if you were to, and maybe this is a question for someone else who would design this, typically how big would an island be, a landscape island be? And is it two spots? Is it three spots? Does anyone have an idea of what that would be roughly?
I think one spot.
Yes. The ordinance typically has a minimum size requirement, 20 by, 20-foot depth by 10 feet wide, typically 200 square feet.
Okay.
You're gonna lose that island, you're gonna lose that site of that island, it's gonna be smothered with carports around it.
Well, and, and, and the idea is, is, is maybe instead of having, you know, the, you know, instead of having all of these, maybe you have the islands on the side of the carports or something, you know? I, I'm just thinking out loud here, because, I, I would be candid, if, the idea is, is we can only do islands in Lot Four, which happens to be the one that gets the least visibility from the public, I don't think that's really a solution to the issues that the commissioners have been saying.
Can I confirm, then, that your softening question, or softening concern with islands or landscape, or whatever the combination of, really is truly the Lot One and Lot Three?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's more so for people that are driving by than our residents that live there, or the residents that live right around there?
I think...
Just for passerbyers.
Well, I don't know if it's necessarily passerbyers, so I would say it's the people in the community, obviously, who live adjacent to that. And then, yes, certainly the streetscape component of it, if someone who's walking, or who might live over on Taylor or on Helen, who walks their dog and says, "Oh, look at that, that looks, they really did a nice job over there with respect to softening that area." So it's not necessarily just the people who live right on First or on Second, but rather several blocks away who I know walk over there all the time.
Well, one, one other thing that would be helpful, and maybe I missed it on the plan, but the parking table, the parking data breaks it out by lot, but it doesn't say the number of units associated with each lot.
Right here.
You know, like Lot Two, for example, existing parking 41, proposed parking 41, but I don't know how many units are serviced by that lot.
There is a site plan in there, because I think somebody asked about where residents would be parking specifically. I know it would require that you probably count a little bit, but each building has 11 units, and we've identified which buildings will be in which carports.
So some buildings have more than one hallway.
Well, but you could easily put on the building itself, the number of units associated with each building, right?
Yeah.
Just some way, because, because that relates to the parking on a lot-by-lot basis, right? When we have...
They're all the same, there's 11 units per hallway, two units per hallway.
11 units per hallway, and there's 15 hallways.
What's the breakout of two-bedroom, one-bedroom?
Right.
There's one two-bedroom in every building.
Okay.
And then...
One, there's one two-bedroom in every hallway.
Hallway.
And then one hallway has all two bedrooms.
I would just suggest, put that on, put that on the plan. Right? Put it on the plan, so that we can easily see that, you know? And again, if it was there somewhere, I just missed it. I'm, I'm looking at C3, which is where all the parking information is, so...
I'm gonna go on record with the bribe.
No. I wouldn't recommend that.
If I have 18 copies of these things, I'll plant more trees.
The other thing, I think we need... Is a, a cut sheet showing the color make and the height minimums for the carports themselves, included in the revised packet that we'll see next time.
Yeah. Yeah, Vidia, I'm sure will make sure that we get that, that cut sheet next, next time through, yeah.
Did you prepare it yet, or...
Whoever has it, you're a civil engineer, or if you have it on file, please go with the whole package, just Vidia.
Vidia, there was some other discussion here tonight about ADA requirements and code. So for the next time, for us through, I think we'll probably want to do a little bit of homework on what, what actually is required from a code perspective. Is that right?
Absolutely. And I will also request the city building official, Randy, to be present, so he can answer specific questions with regard to the code, because he's the one who reviews it onsite and enforces it.
Yeah.
So what are the requirements, and what are they required to do versus what would be nice for them to do? I, I will definitely look into that. Mr. Gasson made a lot of comments, I've taken down all of the notes, I'll make sure to bring back all of the planning commissioner's notes, and I'll communicate with Kate and Nathan, just to make sure that the next time the plan comes before you, it has all the things that you are requiring.
Right. So I think, I mean, it just sounds like we're moving towards a, a table on this item for tonight. So in terms of next steps here for the petitioner, would they be revising a plan, getting it back to you, Vidia, and then you'll be issuing a letter?
Yes, they would revise the plan and submit it to Siona, because Siona is the coordinator, and Siona, Siona will make sure to get it to me ASAP and figure out which next agenda they will place on.
The other thing I think would be useful is, what is the snow equivalent, like, how do we tell inches per square foot for 25 pounds, Vidia? I, I'm not good at that. If you have a table, that would be good.
I thought, the reason I bottomed that question is, Kate mentioned that she was caught by surprise, because it is a flat roof, and it is, it's a standing seam metal kind of roof. The thought just occurred to me, if we have a heady snowfall and we have massive amounts of snow piled on top of the roof, what happens? Does it buckle? Is there, like, a tension or a load? And that's why I raised that question. So maybe a little bit more information from the manufacturer, I'm sure as Nathan mentioned, these are designed for climates like ours, so maybe some information for how they judge that, or maybe in winter they'll have a regular program where the maintenance guy will go out, and if it's more than a couple of inches of snow, just push them off with a broom or a rake.
Fair enough. Any last thoughts or comments before we entertain a motion? I will entertain a motion.
Thank you all.
So a motion, I'll make a motion to table this to the next meeting when the applicant submits the changes that we're looking for.
All right. Support. So motion to table by Mr. Bixson, support by Mr. Gasson. Roll call, please.
Mayor Bixson?
Yes.
Gasson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Lord?
Yes.
Mark Martin?
Yes.
Mark Martin?
Yes.
Yes.
Howler?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
Sage is also, yes.
Oh, sorry. I waited for the...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Steve. Sage?
All right. Thank you for coming in, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so moving along...
Chairman Lord?
Yes.
I don't know if Siona noticed, somebody has their hand raised?
Yeah, he's on, he's gonna get to the public comment, and then I'll let him talk.
Okay, I wasn't sure whether it was for this project, so just, thank you.
Great. All right, so moving on to item number six, miscellaneous. Does anybody have any miscellaneous?
Is there any public comment?
That's number seven. All right. Moving along, number seven, public comment. Siona, do we have, who do we have?
Father with the last number...
We're getting a lot of feedback on that.
I will just look. Father with the last number 695. You can unmute.
Yeah, hi, this is Steve, can you guys hear me?
We can. Go ahead, Steve.
Oh, geez, I apologize. I'm sorry, can you guys hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. Go ahead.
All right, sorry about that. I tried to get on the first public comment, but this is like, over my head technologically. Hi, my name is Steve Robinson, I appreciate the time, I'll be quick. I'm the contract purchaser for the SolarOnyx building located at, on Woodward Avenue. And we've been working on a number of different plans, and it's, for the, the project, it's quite a complicated piece of property. It's got tremendous natural resources with a, with a Paint Creek on the north end of the property, the Paint Creek Trail on the west side of the property, but also faces challenges given the surrounding industrial uses. We're excited about a couple different concepts. The challenge for us is that the, the barrier to entry, the cost to get to Planning Commission, and you just experienced the, the conversation regarding the carports, there's a lot of subjective input that's really important to these types of projects. And we would like to, like, like the opportunity to, to have an open dialogue, to talk about the different ways this property could be used. We can, I've read the ordinance, I've read the master plan, we don't always pick up the personality of the community in those documents like you do in open dialogue. I know that this property has been before you twice before for informal comment, but I think it's, it would be very, very productive in trying to get a good outcome for, what is really a special piece of property, but not without its challenges. So I, I would appreciate consideration for taking a look at this project at a future meeting.
Thank you. Vidia, what's, what is our, I guess, process and ability for, for a potential applicant to come in and solicit feedback on more of an informal basis?
Vice Chairman Lord, if I may interject, I'm sorry, Vidia. Steve actually has emailed me and Nick, and at the last time that they presented, the planning commission stated that they were no longer interested in hearing another concept for development, and stated that they would need to go ahead and go through the site plan process. So I'm not understanding the confusion, but they don't really want any more concept discussions to take place. It's either all in or nothing. I think he, Nick emailed you on the 26th of last month, I believe, and let you know that the concept discussions are no longer going to take place. Once you guys are ready to submit, you can go ahead and submit a full-fledged site plan, and then Vidia will...
And with all due respect to Nick, and the feedback that I've gotten, I, I, we've, we've had conversations with a number of different people that said that we thought it was a great idea, and since the planning commission apparently is the one that said they didn't want to see any more concept plan, I thought I would ask directly to the planning commission. I did submit a letter to the planning commission, but I'm not sure it ever made it through the planning commission.
I have not seen anything.
Can I ask a question?
Christian?
I thought, when we had, a couple of months ago, maybe, we had talked about, yeah, we didn't think it was a bad idea for concepts to come before us. Is this something different? Is this one that has already been brought up a few times already?
This has been brought up, and they have come, the, I think the last time they were here would be the June, I think, May or June, and they provided their concept.
Was this the storage unit?
Yeah.
Okay.
That is not us. That is not us.
Okay, I may be mistaken, but it's still the, the, this is the Solar...
Right. Though what I remember was the, the storage unit concept.
Yeah, that might have been the reserves, my apologies.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a, this is a different one.
Please, I see how you guys would like to proceed.
Prior to the storage unit, which I thought this was too, was, was this the microhousing? Was that initially?
That was the, that was the first one years ago.
Why don't we ask this gentleman what the concept is? Yeah.
Mr. Robinson, have you been before the planning commission?
I have not been, I've been through in front of a million planning commissions, I just haven't been in front of this one on this project. So I am not a microhousing guy, I think that self-storage is the wrong use for the property, personally. That wasn't my concept, I have other concepts for the plan, for the property. Some of you know me, and know that I can be quite creative, but it takes a creative process to get a great outcome, and I would encourage this community to think about being open, because as a developer spends the kind of dollars that it costs to get, you know, a full submittal package in front of you, on, when there's so many subjective criteria or so much subjective input, then, you know, it's really hard to get a good outcome, because you're so, you're chasing dollars at that point, you've invested so much in site plans, it's hard to change direction.
Yeah, I don't, I don't just...
If dialogue, correct, sorry.
No, I, I don't disagree with that myself. I think that it would be good for us to consider avenues to have that kind of dialogue. I, I, I don't know if that's in a formal planning commission meeting, or a separate study session, or whatever the case may be, but, but, but I, personally, in my opinion, I could see, I could see value there. Mr. Gasson?
Mr. Chairman, I, I would totally agree, unless there is an administrative reason not to, outside of the planning commission, I think our, our purview on things that happen or coming before us would be well-served by an informal conversation in front of us, even before someone spends a lot of time going down the road that we might not think favorable of.
Right. Agreed.
If I could add, Lane Wing, City Manager. So Steve, I, I have not had the opportunity to meet with you, I know, I think part of the challenge, and I think the frustration maybe that our staff from Nick and Siona have been, is there's, there's a cost for Vidia to go through and, and review these things, and it, with this particular site, I think we've gone through two or three already at this point, that the city keeps on eating that cost every time somebody either has a, I guess, an interest in that property and is not the actual owner. So that, that, you know, would be, you know, I'd be happy, again, as the City Manager, to meet with you. You know, I, again, I don't know your circumstance, if you just have, you know, ownership in this property, are you looking at purchasing this property? And, and, you know, again, from tonight's meeting, I don't have too much information or, or background on yourself, or, or who you represent.
I can, I can fill you in if you want. I mean, I'm trying not to get out of line here on what would be a public comment, but on the contract purchase, I do not own the property, but I've been working with the property owners. The property's been on the market for quite a bit, quite a amount of time, and there's been a couple of proposals that have been pushed forward to the planning commission, and the result. And, I mean, if there's a, we're not asking anybody to review anything, we're talking about an open meeting, we've done this with a number of other communities, some of those communities might charge us a nominal fee to cover the costs. But I really don't, I really think it's the, in my experience, and I've been doing this for quite a bit of time, is that it's the best way to get a good outcome. I, I'm not sure what the hesitancy is.
So, so I think the hesitancy is us choosing what's, you know, you over somebody else who, who's not the actual owner.
I'm a contract purchaser, I can provide you a copy of the document.
Okay.
If I wasn't a contract purchaser, I wouldn't be coming to you.
Unfortunately, again, we've, we, we don't know, and we've had, I guess, those experiences in the past. Typically, when there's been concepts, that's been brought to our deputy city manager who's overseeing these, in his absence, I'm happy to, to meet with you. You know, if, if you're looking for guidance on what can be, you know, built in that particular area, I know there's, you know, Bromfield components, our Public Works is actually directly next to it, there's the trail system, it's, like you said, there's a lot of positives, and there's some, some challenges there. So I, I guess, when you're saying that you would like, I guess, some input from our, our planning commission, that's what I'm trying to, are trying to see, can we build a four-story building there? Can we build, you know, like, I guess, what might be appropriate is maybe for us to, to have an off, off conversation, off, off the record here.
Yeah.
I will follow up with you after this meeting, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Steve.
I came to this body because this body votes on special man uses and other, other things that would probably be applicable to this property.
Totally understand. The challenge for them is, if they're giving you advice prior to you bringing a project, they, you know, they might be tainting the way that, they, they might be boxing themselves in a corner. So again, I would appreciate you and I having some conversations, I'm happy to answer your questions, I just don't want to jeopardize the, the planning commission and their objectivity. I just don't want to jeopardize the, the, the planning commission and their objectivity.
All right. Steve, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Lord.
Siona, anyone else?
No, not at this time.
All right. Moving along, item number eight, upcoming agenda items for October 21st.
Yes, so we have two public hearings. One will be for the consideration of the ordinance amendment to section 2125 regarding fit standard in addition to a public hearing for the consideration of the ordinance amendment to section 2306 regarding light and illumination.
Mr. Chairman, are, are we talking about the master plan that meeting as well? Or was that?
For the next meeting, are we talking about the master plan?
Yes, I apologize.
Yeah. Thank you.
That will always also be discussed. Also, I'd like to add, if you guys have any additional comment, written comments regarding the master plan, those are due to me by Friday.
Friday.
And it will be discussed on that meeting.
So by Friday, everyone will have read the current master plan and the new one and issued comments.
I have only received comments from a few people, but we still have time.
Okay. All right, anything else? Is that it, Siona?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
There's a possibility I won't be present on 21st. As I get confirmation, I'll inform Siona of that in case form's an issue.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate that.
I would also like to add, um, the gentleman Steve had reached out to me and Nick previously. They were, the last time SolarOnyx was discussed was in April, um, 2021, um, as far as the development for SolarOnyx. However, uh, like I stated, Nick has had several conversations with Steve this IP medical company a few times, but again, it's up to you guys as far as, you know, concept discussions, that's fine. It's just at that point, we thought that we had provided them with that. So that's why Nick had emailed him this, uh, last month and stated, you know, you guys have already seen the concept and to go for it with excitement.
Well, but. Yeah, he was saying that he's not been before this body or.
He probably, however, the developer or another person from that development may have. That's my point.
Well, I think for, for me, I think it's a, it's, it's a, um, a conversation that should be had in terms of do we want
Oh, certain.
to solicit, you know, or, or to accept discussions on concept plans. You know, I know other communities, you know, they would call it a, you know, there's, there's a pre-application process. There's, you know, you, you submit a nominal fee.
And they've done, they've been on the meeting before, so we don't charge anything. Vidya doesn't even review anything. It's just literally a concept discussion. So, um, I have no problem with it.
And that would make it to the planning commission?
Yep, we've had them before. They were on the previous, the April planning mission.
Well, then it sounds like there is a process for that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may just interject.
Please.
I, I think the concern that Nick and Blaine have, which, which is valid, there is a pre-application process in many communities. The challenge over here is the applicant, uh, this gentleman stated that he wants to come before the planning commission and get feedback without starting a formal process. I'm not sure how comfortable the planning commission will be with regard to giving feedback because should you give feedback just based on your thoughts at the moment you see the plan? And he designs the entire site plan based on that and submits a formal application. And at the time of formal review, the planning commission says, you know, this is not really what we envision. We don't want a situation where the applicant says, hey, I spent all this money and designed this plan after receiving feedback from you. Which is why the initial stage typically pre-application meeting is always held only with city administration. It generally, in many municipalities, they don't bring it before the planning commission so that the planning commission's integrity is maintained and you're not accused later of having given them direction that you're backing up. So it's, it's not unusual for him to get his preliminary comments from Siona, Nick, uh, and Blaine as the city administrative staff before filing a formal application and coming before you. If he's worried about spending all of the money for a site plan, he can start with, Rochester does not require you to do full engineering like most other municipalities I work for do. They expect you to do full preliminary engineering before you even get site plan approval and final site plan is granted only after full engineering. Our process here is a lot less stringent because they go into full engineering only after full site planning. So I think Blaine and Nick are trying to in a way protect the planning commission so that an applicant doesn't come and say, I'm just soliciting feedback and then spends the money based on your feedback and you're suddenly boxed into a corner saying, we told him this is what we would like to see, but we don't really like what we are seeing at this time. So those are my thoughts about why the city would prefer to handle the initial contact administration.
Fair enough. All right. If nothing else, I think we're on to item number nine, adjourn. Very good. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Good job, Eric.